... Who has the call? Um, I don't know. You can do it. 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 Thank you, Mr. Renner, for coming here.
You have time. 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 You have time.
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the township of Lakewood at least 48 hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting, and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meeting Act.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Grunberger.
Here.
Mr. Franklin.
Here.
Mr. Pipperson.
Mr. Plansbom.
Mr. Hertzel.
Yeah.
Mr. Renner.
Mr. Paulman.
Mr. Graffos.
Mr. Garfield.
Okay. Swing of professionals.
Do you swear? Um... Yes.
Okay. We have anything to memorialize?
Um, at the last planning board meeting, the board did approve and adopt a resolution for the 2018 meeting dates. Unfortunately, since then, I have been advised of some conflicts. You'll see up here on the projector. I apologize if I don't have my glasses on, so it's fuzzy for everyone at this meeting. But June 5th, we had scheduled as a potential meeting date night. Unfortunately, that's the primary election night, so the courtroom's not available. I'm recommending we move to either Wednesday, the 6th, or the following Tuesday, June 12th.
Or, what was upstairs?
Um, we potentially could hold it Tuesday, the 5th, upstairs, I would assume. I don't see a problem with that. Um, but the other days in that month are generally available as well, so this one wasn't as tight as the other months we had been looking at.
Okay.
Um, so it's with the board's consideration, I guess.
Okay. What do you hope? Should we go upstairs? Upstairs?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see.
So we'll just get to...
Upstairs on Tuesday or downstairs on Monday or Wednesday?
Or we could do Tuesday, Tuesday, the 12th. We would just have two weeks in a row then in June instead of every... I'm not sure. I had never considered that an option until Mr. Hertzel mentioned it.
I've been to a lot of meetings upstairs.
Okay. So if we want to stick with Tuesday, the 5th?
Let's leave it.
Go upstairs?
Yeah.
Okay. And the other conflict was September 12th, which we were trying to get around. Yom Kippur and I apologize, there's another holiday right around there.
Sukkos?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Turns out, I believe the 12th, we found out, was also a fasting day.
Okay.
The Mondays of that month are occupied by the zoning board, so we're looking at potentially Thursday, the 13th or the 20th for September 2nd, the second meeting in September. However, the committee hasn't made their schedule yet, so I don't know if the committee's going to meet one of those Thursdays.
When is the zoning board meeting?
Zoning board is meeting Monday, either the 10th or 17th, and the other Monday is a holiday. I don't remember which one.
Can we meet the same Monday upstairs?
I would imagine that's probably the least optimal choice, because we have a lot of professionals that would be attending both meetings. Um, we could potentially meet that one of the Thursdays, even if the committee schedules for that night, we could relocate to upstairs.
Okay.
So I would say maybe choose either Thursday, the 13th or the 20th. I think they're both equally chance of us having a...
Which one is the biggest space? We shouldn't have two weeks in a row, but they're the same?
Uh, September 20th.
Okay, so leave it at the point there.
Okay.
Okay.
So September, we're going to move the second meeting to the 20th, and June 5th, we'll keep on the 5th and schedule in one of the upstairs conferences.
And everything else stays the same?
Everything else stays the same.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that?
Technically, I need a motion, because then we're going to sign a new resolution.
Okay. We have a motion to go with profit. We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Go with seconds. All in favor?
On.
Okay. No offense.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, we have One Oak Street Administrative Minor, SD 2313 AO. There's a copy of the plans and a review letter in front of Mr. Hertzel. I did take a look at it myself, as did Terry. It's fully conforming. There aren't any variances. Mr. Viner, if you have any questions on it, but it looks very...
First, Terry. Any variances? You check it over? You're fine, okay? Okay.
I agree.
And you agree?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion on Oak Street, correct?
How many? You want to talk to me, sir?
Two. Four. One second.
Okay, a second. Hey, roll call?
Mr. Grunberger.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Paulman.
Yes.
Okay, and just please try and keep it... Please try and keep it down in the audience. It's difficult. It doesn't echo up here. It's hard for the stenographer to get down what we're speaking about. Thank you.
Okay, number six, correspondence.
Uh, correspondence.
Are we doing... Which one did you want to do first?
We already announced that we're going to have to carry that one.
Oh, you can't... Oh, yeah, we don't have a call on that anymore.
Correct. So we are going to continue in order. The next item is correspondence, item SP 2190AA, excuse me, for by St. Joshua Medina Road. Um, this had previously come before the board. I think there was some concern about whether or not it had been noticed. Um, and I apologize, looking out, this may have been Mr. Kishuba as well, unless there's someone else stepping forward to walk the board through this. I don't recall.
No, let's have them. We'll get back to it.
You identify yourself, sir, just for the record?
Multiple options.
Thank you.
You have to be affirmed.
Did you say your answer? You swear or affirm that the testimony you give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
What do you mean?
Multiple options.
Thank you. Did you get the spelling on that?
Hmm.
Thank you. Yeah.
Is this a corporation?
H-A-I. T-O-L-C-H-I-N-N-S-T-Y.
Correspondence.
Don't they need an attorney?
Uh, if it's correspondence, do we require that they're represented by an attorney? I don't think so. Not for correspondence. It's considered informal. If he has an obligation, then definitely yes.
Okay. Technically, it's a corporation, you need an attorney.
Technically.
Okay, so the attorney just said you can get your content. Okay.
So now we present notice, please. We... We present notice, and we'd like to change the resolution stated that they should be putting up a writing space ten feet around the property. Would you like to change that little fence, vinyl fencing along the front and side, but not into the backyard and avoid fencing?
Why do you want to take out all the vines?
Sorry?
Why do you want to take out the trees?
We don't have it. We'd like to...
The resolution said that they have to put trees in, and you're going to take the trees out and put a fence instead?
Yeah, correct.
So I'm asking you, why do you want to take out the trees?
More privacy and blends in with the neighborhood. No one has trees.
Okay, and the buffer, are you making the buffer any smaller?
The fence...
The buffer staying the same? It's just you don't want to put the trees in?
The fence instead of the trees takes up less room, and it's more privacy for the neighbors. And no one's running back and forth.
I'm missing something.
Um, I apologize, however, I don't recall specifically seeing a copy of the notice or proof of notice. I know you guys had indicated you had sent it, but I have no idea what the notice said, what the content was, whether it was clear for the neighbors to understand or who...
I mean, I don't... I mean, you're not...
I'm not doubting you. I'm just realizing now that I haven't seen it.
The building is standing already?
Yes.
Okay, so you're not building anything bigger? You just don't want to put the trees in?
Right.
And what kind of fence are you bringing in?
Vinyl, four-foot vinyl in the top half, and then from the house, six-foot vinyl, and then backyard is wood, wood stank.
Six-foot again?
Six-foot, wood stank.
Okay. Any questions, any board members?
Has it been confirmed with the secretary that if you didn't have notice?
Should I say?
I believe we have a neighbor here. Um, if you have a copy of the notice, I will take that.
Take it now, here? I'll give it to you.
I think it would be better before the board acts on it for me to see that notice, and in the meantime, if the board would like to open it to the public, then that would be the time for any members of the public who have questions or concerns to speak up, okay?
Yes, sir.
If you have.
Say well. Any board members have any questions? Send them out into the public. Any member of the public would like to be heard in this application, please come forward. Please speak into the mic and state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Rochelle Roden.
Raise your hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have the spelling of her name?
R-A-U-C-H-I-N-N-S-T-Y.
Shh.
R-A-U-C-H-I-N-N-S-T-Y.
Okay, please speak into the mic.
Yeah, I was a little bit concerned, because I... My property is the one facing the back of their fence, and it's already six-foot, and kind of like you, I was a little bit unclear about the letter, because right now it's kind of a little bit of an isolation, the way that it's set up, so I just wanted to clarify and see exactly how much, like, what exactly is being done, because right now it's... It's not...
So, I'm sorry, just to clarify, you're saying their fence has already been put up?
Yes.
Okay, so you know what it will look like? They're just looking for that approval?
Well, it wouldn't want it the back is already put up.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so the board can certainly take your concerns into consideration, um, like...
You live right behind it, yes? Yes, right at the corner. I have a neighbor in the...
The fence is up, or then it's not up on your side?
No. No, yeah, it meets at the corner.
Okay.
My corner and their corner meet at each other and everything like that, so...
Okay.
Well, I've got the back, or I already see it.
But they're not changing the fence?
I...
They just want not to put trees on their side?
I think they were required to put trees up.
Right.
Throughout construction, they have decided they would prefer a fence, so they did indeed put the fence up, which they have a right to do regardless of the approval, but if they want the fence in lieu of the trees, and they're not going to put the trees up, they need the board to acknowledge that they don't need the trees any longer.
The original approval had the fence inside?
It did, was not.
No, the original approval had trees only.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So does that mean that the fence is going to stay? Are they changing the type of fence, or exactly?
What would you like to see?
I would like something a little bit more appealing. It's deserved. It's just really, it's a real isolation.
Have they put the white vinyl up on the side property lines yet?
No, it's a wooden one.
Would white vinyl along the back, in addition to the white vinyl along the side, be better than the wood fence they put up?
I mean, uh, yeah, preferably, yeah. Yeah.
How much of their property adds up to...
It's at a corner, so it's like four properties, like a pot. So theirs is right here, and mine is right here, and then there's two other neighbors here, so it's literally like a quarter of a pot. So...
She's not behind? She's behind and over one lot?
Yeah, but when I look out, like, they're right here, like, I can see the fence and everything, like, it's at the corner.
I personally think, I'm going to see it.
Does that... The survey had the second page. Does that... Would you rather have trees than have a vinyl fence? That's... I think that's what that...
Oh, yes, they... Trees. I... The trees, I would prefer the fence, actually.
You would prefer the fence?
Yeah, it's just that the one that they had installed, the one that was there, wasn't as high as the one that is in there right now.
So would you agree? How high is it now? Six feet?
Yes.
I would imagine they part up, put up the wood fence in the back at the six feet they're requesting for. They're probably in construction and want their bond or their CEO in the engineering department saying, "Hold up, you're supposed to have trees," and they're saying, "Wait, but we put this fence in instead."
Let me ask you a question. Can you meet with a neighbor and work out with the fence? I mean, if she agrees that she'd rather have a good fence and make sure the fence is, uh, that it works at six foot, whatever it is, just reach out to the neighbor and make sure the fence is, that, well, you both agree on that?
Okay. That's fine. Yeah, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay.
Are you taking any action to grant a waiver for the trees at this time?
Yeah.
Or are you going to wait till the end of the meeting to see if they've come up with a...
Yeah, I think they should walk outside, maybe come up and agree with what they want to suit, and then we'll take action.
Okay. I will agree with that. All right, so we'll put correspondence on hold for now, if you guys want to take some time to speak. I did see the notice, thank you. The content of the notice looks acceptable to me. Um, it is clear what they were looking to do tonight. It's probably a little unclear, because the fence is already partially constructed, but the notice was sufficient, in my opinion.
Okay, technically, we can listen to one or two, but it was tabled, so it's off.
It's true.
Is that a question for the attorney?
No. Actually, I could start that. There is a call, yeah?
I know that the...
Right, the concern is, we already announced that it was being carried.
And could be some people left.
There is a call.
What's it?
It was...
What?
...or the applicant.
Okay, please be quiet in the audience, we cannot hear up here. Okay, so we're going back to listen to number one and two?
I think so, yes.
You're okay with it? Okay, Mrs. Weinstein?
Yeah, just, are we addressing Kimberly's concern? I mean, Kimberly said that they can ask Mr. Ackerman if he has an relationship with the school.
That's on number one?
That's on number one.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Kimberly?
I don't know if you feel it would be helpful to hear the objectors issue, or if you would rather have me just question Mr. Ackerman myself.
Mr. Ackerman, do you feel...
I'm in court of example.
Do you feel we have any conflict with the... Ms. Ackerman, or committee member, do you feel we have any conflict with SP 223 Zichwan Chayim?
I can show you, I never made a donation to the school.
Okay.
But, I don't have any kids that go there. I'm familiar with Mr. Pearlstein, but I'm familiar with a lot of schools. I deal with a lot of the schools when they come to the... when they need help, they need guidance often with the inspection department. That's my relationship with most of the school owners in town. I didn't know him before I was on the committee. And the more I talk to him, the less I realize I know him.
Okay.
But I don't have any monetary relationship. Not, you know, none of my children go to his schools. I had a son that went to his camp five or six years ago.
Okay, and do you feel that you can sit on this application and give an unbiased opinion in your decisions?
Very much so.
Okay.
If the applicant is, has a concern that he wants to bring up to me, then I have no problem. But I can tell you, half this town has my cellphone number, so... Unfortunately, it rings all day, and...
You pick up for her?
I picked up for you before. I gave you my number.
Okay, Mrs. Weinstein, you want to take the risk?
Yes, we will take the risk.
Okay.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Renner has stepped down for this application.
Okay, so...
I'm gonna step down for this application as well. Never mind.
Okay, so, Terry, would you like to go over anything on the report from SP 2233? Mr. Zichwan Chayim?
Okay. Submission waivers as indicated in page four of our letter. They include TOFO, contours, and manly features within 20 feet, as well as EBISS. We support the few waivers because we have enough information on the plans, and we also support the waiver of the environmental impact statement due to the previously developed nature of the site.
Okay, do we have a motion to go along with the recognition of...
Over.
Okay, do we have a second to grant the waivers? Number one second, Mr. Grunberg? Number two second the waivers? They're all in favor? Okay. The waiver's granted.
Thank you. And then under item two zoning, variance relief is necessary for perimeter buffer relief, as well as for parking within these sidewalks.
Okay, that's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Mrs. Weinstein?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, first of all.
Make up for lost time.
Okay, we will, we will. Thank everybody, or thank all the board members for being here this evening on a special meet night.
We all waited an extra hour.
Yes, and for waiting the extra hour.
Okay.
Um, we... Yes, just about to do that. Maryam Weinstein, on behalf of the applicant. Zichwan Chayim Inc. Want me to spell it? Okay. Um, we are here this evening seeking preliminary and final minor subdivision approval, first to create two lots from two existing lots. Essentially, we're taking some land from existing Lot 17, and appending it to Lot 13. And then, for site plan approval for a school on the newly created proposed Lot 13.01. There are no variances associated with the subdivision approval. Applicant is then seeking preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a girls' elementary school on the newly formed lot. This is for the Shivas Chayim School. This school is currently housed in the building on Pine Street. But they have already outgrown that building that they built prior to opening their doors to their very first class. The school currently has primary through fifth grades, with one class per level in the upper grades, and parallel classes in the younger grades. They are building this building to make more room for incoming classes. The only relief we are seeking is buffer relief, and we will defer to the board as to what they feel is appropriate, and relief from parking in a buffer area. Currently have four school buses in the morning, and at Friday afternoon dismissal. Otherwise, dismissal times are staggered, and at present, there are never more than two buses at a given dismissal time. At this point, I'm gonna ask that we have Brian Flannery, our planner, sworn, and he will certainly go through the circulation and the busing and all that.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. As indicated, we're doing two applications here, a minor subdivision, to take a small piece of property off the residential lot on the corner of New Hampshire and Oak, and make a larger 30,000 square foot lot for the school. Then we'll talk about a girls' elementary school, where we're providing 32 parking spaces, bus circulation around the building to allow the buses to come in, the students to offload, and then go out. As Maryam indicated, we're looking for buffer relief, and the applicant would defer to the board on what would be appropriate. We've shown some landscaping to accommodate that, where we feel that the landscaping can provide the buffer in accordance with the intensity order.
Brian, is there any variances on...
No variances.
The buffer, the buffer relief requirements are under the 900 section. Technically, it's...
Well, the buffer relief, sometimes we handle it as a design waiver, sometimes we handle it as a variance. If it's a variance, certainly it's a C2 variance that the board can grant. We need to show the benefits outweigh the detriments. This is an inherently beneficial use. We all know that the schools are needed in Lakewood. It's on New Hampshire Avenue, which is an appropriate location for it. And certainly, with my testimony, that the benefits of providing this site in an appropriate location outweigh the only detriment would be the aesthetics, which can be accommodated by landscaping to the board's satisfaction.
Do we read this on Oak and what?
New Hampshire.
This property is on New Hampshire. Oak comes into it because we took a lot on the corner, which is a residential lot, took a piece off of that in order to make the bus circulation on the site. If you look at the bus circulation, I think this is what the planning board was talking about when we did the master plan, where you provide for appropriate bus circulation, rather than just have a little place where the buses can come in, it allows the buses to come in, the offloads go all the way around, and they have a separate entrance and exit. So I think that's laid out very well. The county has seen and likes it.
The buses are folding around the whole building?
Yeah.
What do you think so far? Is that a back? They go in, they go back.
From the back.
So, did the back or the side?
Uh-huh. Uh, in the southwestern corner.
Yeah, you're showing the bus drop-off spaces on the, I guess would be the south of the side.
Yeah, and the buses will stop, and there's a sidewalk there, and if you walk in, then back.
And they'll walk back, okay, alright, thank you.
You have to do one question. You got a double arrow there on the parking lot on the right side. If you've got a car coming back against you, the bus is not gonna be able to make that turn, is it, in the back?
Well, the reason for the double arrow is in case any of the teachers parked here don't need to go all the way around, and certainly the teachers aren't doing those movements at the same time the buses are. This would be similar to any parking lot, where you have sufficient width. If a car is trying to move when the buses going, that's not the work, but that's not a situation that you could run into with the teachers and the buses. And it only provides for the cars to come out here. The board felt that they didn't want that provision. I think it provides some ease for some of the cars that are in there, without having to go all the way around the back.
It's not that much going around the building. I think it's safer to go all in one direction.
If that's the board's decision, we would certainly...
It makes more sense.
It's more, it's safer, we go all in one direction. So now, in New Hampshire Avenue, it's a right and right up, right?
Correct.
Excuse me, Chairman. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, there's one more thing in my letter I should have mentioned earlier. I believe, Brian, you're seeking a waiver for sidewalk along the property front, is that correct? Or are you providing sidewalks?
That's because the county doesn't want sidewalk there.
Why would the county not want sidewalk?
I... Supposedly widening the lane eventually, and therefore don't want sidewalk there at this time.
The board can certainly take that into account. It's up to you whether you want sidewalk or not, you're the board.
What do you say to the law sidewalk, you can't want?
If you require sidewalk, it could affect the final alignment, the final development of the property. You may have to move things around. I have not contact with the county. I don't know what they want or don't want.
Brian, anything else in the report you'd like to testify on? My students, my buses. My ass is full of trash, where's the trash at?
There's a trash enclosure on the back lawn.
John, is that okay?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Yeah? Okay.
Brian, it says nine classrooms, roughly 240 students, six or seven buses.
Yeah.
I'm just...
That's, that's typical Lakewood Elementary School, yeah.
It says it over here.
Is anything in the report that you...
You didn't get a chance to read it, right?
I was hired 10 minutes ago.
Mr. Fishel, but couldn't wait, he had another meeting, so...
Mrs. Weinstein, is anything in the report that you cannot agree with? The rest of the report, you agree?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I have a question about the joining lot that you're taking away from. Is that gonna create any type of nonconformity, or...
No. That's fully, that, the subdivision application is fully conforming. It's not creating any nonconformity.
The lot that remains is 20,542 square feet, and it needs no buffer relief.
Okay, and the buffer relief that you're asking for, is that one of the concerns that the neighbors have?
You can hear from the neighbor momentarily.
But I won't ask too many questions. That's what the neighbor's gonna be addressing, but I would assume.
I'm gonna, I'm not gonna tell you what the neighbor wants. The neighbor's here, we're gonna let the neighbor speak as soon as you open to the public.
Mr. Chair, we don't give any waivers on sidewalks. We've gotta figure out a way that sidewalks go. Even with the counties not wanting sidewalks, they've gotta figure out if money goes into escrow for sidewalks, or...
We would post a bond for the sidewalks. And then, we'll go to the county, and it'll be some back and forth with the county and the township. And when we work it out, there'll be money in a bond for the sidewalk, if it needs to be done.
Don't know how to put it.
Well, it's, it's not that easy. They're doing, they're doing turning lanes. They don't know what the turning lanes are. But by the time it's time to build the sidewalk, we'll have worked it out. And we can work it out with the township professionals. But if sidewalk is bonded, you'll know the money's there, and sidewalk will go in. And at the time it's to go in, we'll get it at the right spot.
I can recommend something, Chairman. If the board wants, please be quiet in the audience. If the board wants to act favorably on the application with the stipulation about putting a bond, or monies, or whatever, that should be subject to township approval. Make sure that the township is given an opportunity to say, "Yes, that's fine," or "No, you can't do that."
Okay. You finished? Okay, uh, is anybody here... Anybody, any board members have any question on this application? Sinon, will open up to the public. Anybody from the public would like to be heard, please come forward. Please speak into the mic, so you can name to the record, and you have to be affirmed.
Yechiel Berger. Y U C H I E L B E R G E R.
Raise your hand, sir.
Mr. Berger.
Sorry?
Raise your hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, there are two things I wanted to point out. First of all, this school is at, yeah, it's at...
Where do you live?
I live in front of Oak and Coral.
Oak and Coral.
We are, just like every resident, we're subject to restrictions of, you know, whatever limitations are for zoning and variances. I think the school should be no different. I know schools allow me to approve any property. But that's sort of a buffer to back up, which is back-to-back. It's not back-to-back, we lose my property, but all tends to purpose of it, purposes it is, because there's...
You showed the map where you had property?
I do have a backyard lot, Chairman. It's helpful as well. Back over the street, right, not this way. New Hampshire down here, school is closed here. Coral is back there.
I'm right there, I'm at corner house, right there. So, all the backyards are, basically, my backyard and his backyard. Everything's open over there. So, any type of school over there, you know, I know that the record already was a, some sort of school that had me there, and it was very loud, very disturbing. It moved everything back, and even bigger than it. Now it's a small school, like, you know, 10 kids. But 240 kids over there is, is gonna be a lot more disturbing. And you have a buffer going down, and the property owner is right to, you know, to be living there, and trusting it. And my dad, we know, we have the neighbor also, who couldn't make it tonight, um, this yard.
Don't speak about yourself. How far...
What?
Your property butts up to the school property?
It doesn't, it doesn't butt up. It's, the back, it's basically the houses are all around the perimeter, and then there's all the backyard. So, on my property, backyard, you know, everything, and it goes on over there.
Yes, sir. Brian, do you have a plan?
Well, I marked on, on the map where his lot is and where his school is. He's on the corner, as he indicated. There's two lots in between him and where the school is. So, what he's talking about is he can leave for two lots of the neighbors' backyards. If the ordinance requires 20 feet of existing vegetation, a 8-foot high fence would provide the same buffer, especially when there's two lots in between. And the applicant has agreed to do landscaping or fencing for whatever degree the warrant gives us.
Okay.
The, then parking also, I know previous to the parking that we already had a school until now, the parking would back along, like, very, you know, an awful lot on Pine, and the same on Oak Street, all the back of, on Oak Street, all the, right in front of my property, which is on Oak also. And then the safety issue, which already in the past three weeks, I got from county records, there are three accidents over there the past three weeks that were on record, besides the other ones that don't, that don't, don't show up. It's a dangerous corner. They're putting a school there, it's gonna be more traffic, and, and 240 kids, no less. And I'm assuming part of the reason the county officially doesn't want the sidewalk there probably has to do with also they don't want people walking up and down it. That's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much. They're not asking for any variances on parking, and the school is legal, that is all. So, no. Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the public would like to be heard on this application? Sinon, or close it to the public? Mrs. Weinstein, anything to say?
Um, I told you I'm gonna try to make it quick, so I'm gonna keep my word.
Okay, so I would ask anybody in the board that would like to make a motion on this application...
I just wanted to know about the bond. How does the bond work?
I'm not certain, Louis, that's why I...
I don't make sure that the sidewalks are no getting around there, because the whole place is gonna be built up, and there's gonna be sidewalks, so we're gonna end up in the same situation we've been before. You gotta have sidewalks, so...
I can't guarantee that tonight, Louis, that's why I recommend that the board wants to act upon that stipulation, that that be subject to township approval. It may get to the township, and then the county, they may say, "We can't do that." Okay, then, the applicant and everyone involved need to come back and revisit it, and find a way to put sidewalks. I think the board wants to say, if you act favorably, that if the board intends clearly to have sidewalks, somehow along the property.
Okay, so if we want sidewalks, and we want a bond, but the Kimberly sidewalks have to come back?
At the end of the day, they have to find a way to get sidewalks, is what I think I hear the board.
Right, it's, they have to come back to the board.
Realistically, to accomplish, I think, what you're aiming for, you would just essentially be approving the project with the provision that they're putting sidewalks.
And the candidate would say bond, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You could say bond, or, or similar method.
It would become part of the bond for any project. And after they get their CO, and they sit for a while, and have them put sidewalk in because the county doesn't want it, then they either find a way to let the county make it work, or they come back to the board to have that condition removed.
Putting sidewalks, would that also be a problem?
The setback is, you're fine with a setback, isn't it?
Yes.
And you said you put up an 8-foot fence to satisfy the neighbors?
We put up an 8-foot fence in the back where it impacts the neighbor. Certainly down along the side where we have to do landscaping to the house that's part of the application and doesn't need the buffer, we wouldn't want to do it in that location. And down the other side where, where, you know, on New Hampshire Avenue. But in that corner where it impacts that neighbor, we would...
That corner, the back?
The back.
Can you deal with a little more specifically, Brian? Which direction?
Just, Brian, I think if we have a school, we want a fence around the whole property. Like, on the lot on the other side, they owned, you don't want kids...
We would do six foot on the two sides, and eight foot along the westerly property.
Okay, that's, that's okay.
And that's solid fencing, correct?
Yes.
You don't want kids all over the place running from the school. We want to give the neighbors the privacy.
And that'll be six feet, except within the primary setback.
Correct. Correct.
Four, six, and eight.
Correct.
And sidewalks.
Correct.
I'll make a push to prove. I'll make the stipulation that we...
Okay, Mr. Falman, Mr. Grunberg, a second. You have everything down? Kimberly, you have everything down, yes? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Grunberg?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Fulman?
Yes.
Mr. Ackerman?
Yes.
Excuse me, Committee Man Ackerman. I would recommend, Chairman, that we take a moment to go back to the correspondence item. I believe they may have come some...
Okay. Please be quiet in the audience. Okay, we're going back to Carl's Falmin's. Okay, shh. Okay, you want to get up also? I forgot your name. Okay, you worked everything out? Everything's okay? Okay, thank you very much, both of you, for working it out, Chairman. Okay? Sophia, do you just want to say what you worked out?
I need, I need, I'm sorry, everyone. I need the public to quiet down so we can hear up here. Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, you're agreeing upon, I'm sorry, I just need clarification, sir, for the record. We're agreeing upon the six-foot fence along the rear. What type of material? What's there now, or something different? Okay, so a six-foot wood fence that's properly treated and maintained, so that it looks pleasant. But you're okay with waiving the requirement for the trees? Okay, and we haven't seen any other neighbors from around the area who had any comments, but the board can still make their ultimate decision.
Okay. Do we have a motion of, of the correspondents? We have a second. Okay, first, second, Mr. Grunberg, roll call. Why not?
Uh, Mr. Grunberg?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Fulman?
Yes.
And Mr. Committee Man Ackerman?
I'm gonna abstain, I wasn't here for all conversations.
Okay.
Thank you for working it out.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I'll be listening to number two again.
I have a question.
Yes.
Right now, we're only putting the shots. You're gonna have to change to, you have to, you have to, to the correspondents?
You have to come back, you have to notice the neighbors.
The correspondents will notice them?
I remind you, come back as well, got a vision.
Okay, so the next application we're gonna return to is SP 2257, Yeshiva Even Yisrael. This is the major site plan for a school on Nyman Road. And I'll just ask Ms. Weinstein to confirm again that the applicant is aware of the risks that they're taking, given that we had noticed and carried as a original.
Yes, the applicant is aware of the risk.
Okay, Terry, would you like to go over the report, please?
Uh, on the third page of our letter of submission waivers, we include traffic studies for the city's planning. EIS and architectural obligations, um, they'll have to satisfy the board relative to the traffic. So, we will request for the submission, and we're counting the allegations that exist due to a less than a government coverage and the project, not the property, a project. The EIS, we can support, we had supported, uh, the EIS when we were, uh, the previous, uh, project. We can then find them under architectural obligations. Yeah, we just wanna have them satisfied for...
Do we have a motion to go along with the engineer's recommendation? Offered, we have a second. Frank, Mr. Grunberg, a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of waivers? Aye? Okay, waiver's granted.
We want to zone him. Zoning under variances, we have down that variance relief is necessary for aggregate sidewalk setback, um, and also, also three parking. Um, buffer relief is also required against the 900 section, uh, as well as parking buffers. And then finally, I'm trying waivers, waivers necessary for the driveway width, as well as for the maximum amount of, of our sidewalk.
That's it?
That's it.
There's a lot of work, a lot of work there. And Mrs. Weinstein?
Good evening. Maryam Weinstein, on behalf of the applicant, Yeshiva Even Yisrael. Um, as the board may recall, there was an application on a portion of this site several years ago for a change of use site plan exemption to convert the existing residence to a school. I believe that at that time, the board had a lot of discussion about this being a temporary solution, and about placing a five-year timeframe on that approval to encourage the school to get a full-blown approval within five years. The change, that change of use approval was granted on August 6, 2013. I would like the board to see that here we are, a little more than four years later, and the applicant has acquired additional property, and is in fact back before you with a full-blown application for a beautiful state-of-the-art building, just like the board wanted to see at that time. Since that time, Yeshiva Avenue Yisrael has grown from a fledgling school to a full-blown boys' elementary school, servicing, servicing grades primary through fourth grades. The school currently has 138 students. As for busing, the busing is staggered. In the morning, primary through fifth grades all come at the same time with a total of three buses. In the afternoons, there are staggered dismissals with no more than two buses at a given dismissal time. All students are bused to school, other than the occasional student who misses a bus or adds an appointment. Um, at this point, actually, one more point that I do want to bring out is the variance for parking we are going to omit, so that we certainly will not have, but I will let Glenn address that during this testimony. If I could ask at this point that Glenn lines be sworn.
Do you swear if I'm the testimony you give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Glenn, actually, first, if you could start with that parking variance and, and explain to the board that we will be omitting that one.
He is saying.
Okay, glad you're on. I have another question for that.
He's following me.
Okay, it's fine.
How many, what is required of the parking? It says thirty-five.
Parking, uh, it says thirty-five. We have thirty-five. Uh, according to the terrace count, there's thirty-nine required. Uh, we, we will make changes to the building, uh, to not require a parking variance.
You're not giving more parking spaces?
Well.
You'll take on some classrooms?
To provide more parking spaces, you either have to lose bus lane for completely reasonable, the site removal back. At this point, the, the applicant is already moving the building back, so we can basically design, uh, losing office, uh, you know, two to room, things like that, and come in under the, uh, total of thirty-five.
How do you get that? Take out the last rooms? What are you going to do to get less?
Yeah, they're, they're going to have to reduce rooms, Chairman, out of the classrooms or offices to either be or come under the thirty-five space for parking.
And that's, that's what I said, they're willing to reduce the total number of rooms to get to, to the thirty-five, you know, the thirty-five parking spaces are compliant with what's required.
Okay. Let's, another variant.
Uh, the, uh, going down the list of variance, uh, because the, uh, aggregate side yard setbacks, which is a total of two setbacks, uh, we have fifteen feet, which is required on the north side of the building, and we have seventeen point two feet on the south side of the building. On the, uh, previous application that was approved by the board for the temporary structure, we actually had, uh, a total of twenty-six. The building was set to be thirteen and thirteen. So we have approved since the original, uh, design for the temporary, uh, that was approved.
What's required with the, the signed, uh?
An R forty?
In the R forty, fifteen is, fifteen is on one side, there are fifteen twenty-five, and forty total is required, we have thirty-two.
Okay.
So we have the module is required on the north side, and then, um, and then we have a slightly longer on the south side.
But again, it's, Glenn, you're saying that it's an improvement from what existed and as per the prior approval on the temporary structure, correct?
Correct.
Wall Street, the parking, the, the buffer?
Uh, again, the buffer is, uh, we're getting setback to parking, we do approach into the buffer, uh, with, with the, uh, north side of the building and two areas on the south side of the building, where the blocks and building are, uh, and all the, uh, pardon. When zoning these areas are forty, very large lots, uh, we just, we didn't, you know, they're a large lot, but very narrow. Uh, so, uh, we would request a bumper waiver, we'll provide, uh, fencing or landscaping, whatever the board, uh, would require. Uh, the, uh, the, the house to this, on this lot in the south is actually, um, the building is behind that house by a good thirty to forty feet, and, uh, the house to be, um, it's to the north on Route Twenty-Seven. Uh, we actually, when we showed fifty feet of the property, we didn't get to the house next door. So that house is, the side parking line is wooded, and they're fairly far away.
Is this building existing?
No.
Why the odd shape of the building? On the rear or the side?
Well, they can step in on the south side to, to comply with the hanging parking line, and then there's a little bit of, uh, flashers to, to go out to the rear.
Why can't you go straight?
Go straight where?
On the backs, where are the doors? How far do you have to be from the, the back to front?
Yeah, we, well, we have a, we have play areas at the, uh, at the south side, and that little L-shaped opening. And it's just the way that the, the flashers work out in the hallways and the stairs on the front of the street, it says the club is back. We have architecturals, they were submitted to the board. And, uh, we submitted, uh, we submitted, uh, we submitted.
Have any wet lines on this property?
No.
The rear? There's no wet lines.
No, there's no wet lines.
They were, they were probably submitted for the planning review meeting, maybe not additional copies for the public hearing. I know Glenn just mentioned twelve sets, but nobody submits twelve anymore, it's six and then six later, so. Uh, we may not have gotten the six sets the second time around, so they probably went to the shade tree commission and DPW and all that stuff.
What's the setback in the rear on the half point?
Rear setback required is thirty to a hundred eighty.
Do you have any, any, uh, questions? No questions. No questions.
Where's the situation? Okay. Okay, continue.
Uh, we're trying to, uh, let's see, the design waivers, uh, the thirty-nine-foot driveway entrance is the driveway on the south side. Made that a little wider so we could get a nice, a nice tacky, tacky bus lane on the side parking line and on the building, uh, that, so we put that in, that's thirty feet maximum we're in on. Uh, and the sign waivers is identified in the mountain type of license, we're using, is a place to, maximum permitted of twenty-five feet. So we don't, we don't need that, we need to put thirty-four high ones.
Is that an elementary school?
It's an elementary.
Yes, boys' elementary school.
Okay.
Would you guard, would you guard to the rest of Terry's letter reading? Have any, any, uh?
Agree with that, then? Where, where's the trash on this property?
The lottery variances, which the prior application was approved at five-foot side yard setbacks, had the same lot coverage percentage variance, same front setback, same rear.
Sorry, sorry, you said the same side yard setbacks and the front?
Yes. They, they, no, the, uh, the application was approved in fourteen cars at five-foot side yard setbacks. The application we have tonight for the single families has five yard side yard setbacks. Um, the, the rear yard is fifteen feet for duplexes and sixteen feet for the, for the single families. Um, we're proposing, I'm sorry, we're proposing forty-eight. We're proposing forty-eight to, and, sorry, on the other application, we were proposing forty-five. So the, the, the single families were moved a little bit further back because, uh, we have, we have this space. The, the duplexes were, um, really, you know, maximized on those lots. And that's the reason why they're coming back is they can build a nicer unit with three singles on the, uh, on the, on the three lots that goes the single family house.
Yes, this is, this, this property is located on the corner of Second and Madison. Mr. Renner is correct, there was a bank approved here previously. Um, after the bank got approved, another applicant came in and, and got this approved. Switched it from a bank to these four duplex units and now the Shrooms are asking for it to be three singles.
When we switched it from the bank, we said that putting duplexes is much better than a bank because it's less traffic.
Right, and now we're saying three singles is better than four duplexes. Maybe soon we'll have two singles, I don't know.
Okay.
What?
When was this approved?
This was approved about, which, the, the duplexes about a year ago, within the last year.
I was on all three.
Yeah, that was in the last year.
On the bank also. Okay, is there anything else in the report that you can agree with?
No, the rest of the report was acceptable. There were no, no comments. A lot of what we had done on the, uh, what we did to plan revisions for the duplexes were going to adjust. Uh, there's one or two comments that would be definitely adjusted. This letter we have to make adjustments.
Okay, thank you.
Maximum one basement apartment?
Yes.
Any questions, any board members? Okay, we'll open it to the public. Anybody for the public would like to be heard in this application? Seeing no one, we'll close it for the public and we'll ask for a motion on this application. Okay, Mr. Renner move it, move it. And Mr. Fulman seconds, roll call.
Mr. Renberger.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Fulman.
Okay, is number four yours, sir?
Number four. Number four is SD twenty-two ninety-seven relating to Equity LLC and the Township of Lakewood. The minor subdivision of an existing lot, the two lots on one of those lots are looking for a currency review of parking lots. The property is counted only by deed and will be leased to the applicant of the subject, the owner of the property.
Mary, yes. If I can comment on the lease chairman, uh, going from my number six letter, under submission waivers, uh, the topography of the place, time force, um, we can support the claim waivers.
Okay, do we have a motion going with the waivers? Or third, we have a second?
With waivers?
Uh, topography of the site and time force.
Why do you approve it?
Uh, because it's for a lot line adjustment only. It's no, the subdivision front, uh, impact.
Okay, all in favor?
I, okay. Then under variances, as indicated on section two zoning, uh, the variances are solid include room and lot area and lot width. Front yard setback, uh, building height for, uh, proposed lot two point oh one. Um, parking the leave is indicated comment six. I believe it's all agreed with, is that correct, Mary?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Weinstein?
This is the name of the document?
Yes, I'll, I'll explain it momentarily. Um, good evening, Miriam, Miriam Weinstein on behalf of Kent Lakewood Equities LLC. Um, the subject property contains a four-story, sixty thousand, five hundred eighty-two square foot, state-of-the-art office building, which is already, um, occupied, which has a hundred forty-nine parking spaces. This application is for subdivision of a portion of the lot to be conveyed to the township upon which additional parking stores will be created at the expense of the applicant and for the benefit of the public. Township manager, Tom Henshaw, sent the letter to the planning board that I have a copy of and we can mark it into the record. Um, I'm seeing if the planning board members have seen this?
It's in the Google Drive file, people have copied it.
We can mark this, we didn't mark anything else yet, so this, this.
It's in the file.
In the file, okay. So there was, yeah, there's a letter from Mr. Henshaw, um, in support of the application, which I can certainly read, um, if you'd like me to.
Is it all?
No, it's very short, absolutely. Two Lakewood Township planning board from Thomas L. Henshaw Township manager. Dated October eighteenth, twenty seventeen, Ray Fifteen America Avenue parking lot. The Township of Lakewood is desirous of having the number of parking spaces increased at Fifteen America Avenue, SD twenty-two ninety-seven. The township is in favor of this project because it will help to keep parking off America Avenue, thus helping to create a safer travel, travel corridor along this route. In addition, this project is to be totally financed and constructed by Lakewood Equity LLC. Finally, Lakewood Equity LLC is not a government entity. Thank you, Thomas L. Henshaw Township manager.
So is it the building, there was, there's a building that there was a lot of people parking on this street? And this, this is that building?
This is that building, yes. And I just want to clarify that the other, the variances that Terry read into the record, um, were pretty much already granted at the time that the site plan was granted for the office building several years back. Um, the lot to be created is an undersized lot in the B-six zone and it's deficient in its required lot width. Those are the new variances that are being requested today, but all those other variances, including height variance and all the variances that Terry mentioned, those were all granted. That building is already, as I said, constructed and occupied.
What's the new variances?
The new variances are that the, the new lot that we're creating to put this parking on is deficient in its required lot width and, in, in lot width and in lot area.
For what is, for the?
Well, as a lot in the B-six zone, it's deficient. In point of fact, we're here to, to get approval to put a parking lot on it, so.
Right, so a, a, a lot in the B-six zone has to be two acres minimum?
Yeah, but you're not saying that, so.
You're not adding a principal structure on the lot in question.
We are not adding a principal structure, we are not adding a principal structure.
I think that's what the board has to think about.
The point three oh eight is additional that they're adding. That lot's not going to have two acres, but.
But it's also not going to have a principal structure on it, it's only going to be used for parking. Correct.
Only most parks, as you get it.
Can, can I have, can I have our engineer sworn and let him give the testimony? Thank you, this, um, if you could have Joseph Lalca from, um, DW Smith sworn, please.
Do you swear, I refer that the testimony you give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
It's his decision.
Um, do you want to hear his credentials? You're accepting him as an expert, I don't think he's testified in front of this board.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
My name is Joseph Tess Lalca, L.A.L.K.A. I'm a professional engineering planner, yet I have been before, uh, your board. However, not as currently constituted, so you may not remember me, but I've been qualified.
Okay, you.
Uh, I, I have both professional engineering and, uh, planning license, uh, since the seventies. I've testified in hundreds of municipalities, uh, the courts in the state of New Jersey that, that accepted as an expert, uh, without fail.
Okay, thank you. What's that?
Andrew.
What, what we have here is an enclosed building and on the side that is actually adjacent to the, uh, public works yard is a piece of unused land that is part of the original tract. So the original tract was about two point, uh, eight acres. What we're doing is lopping off three-tenths of an acre that's adjacent to the public works yard. We'd be using it as parking instead of parking on America Avenue. So it really is, it's kind of like an accessory lot. We'd be constructing it, the township, uh, is willing to accept it. Uh, there are other variances because it's three-tenths of an acre and only approximately forty feet wide.
You show us the way that the parcels?
It's the, the original, which is the amount of parking spaces is to the west, uh, fronting on, uh, Internet Avenue. So it is a side for us, or a side lot for us that we would park on, but separate from the two point five acres which would be subdivided. So the lot that has the building on it is compliant.
How many cars could you add on in that property?
Uh, you can get eleven more, which takes them off the street. So instead of a net hundred forty-nine, we have a net hundred sixty.
The original hundred forty-nine, do you have variants on that?
We had a variance, two hundred and two were required.
So you're still deficient then?
We're still deficient, but doing what we can.
To get as many, as many spaces as possible.
To get as many spaces as we, as we possibly can.
What, because the township is taking this property and leasing it back to the?
Uh, if it's a leaseback, there's a, there's a no, a no cost leaseback, so it's.
Why is it patented?
Uh, we are restricted to a hundred forty-nine spaces under the cap rule, so by separating cap, we're on the, 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 the.
So Jackson, do you have any questions on that? You're familiar with it, Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
We'll be with it.
Now, the one other variance that we do have was we were granted a forty-foot front yard and happenstance, the building is thirty-nine point seven feet from the street. So it's three tenths or about four inches, uh, approaching into the line and that's a newly self-created variance. Part of parcel to the construction, we'd like to have that granted and, uh.
How come?
What, is that, is that listed on the table there, on, on the?
Thirty, thirty-nine point seven, where the underlying.
That you already received that?
Yeah, with the underlying zone, the hundred-foot front yard, we were granted a variance for forty and it was built at thirty-nine point seven.
The minimum, you say?
The minimum.
So how, how does something like that happen? How does a building get put up in their own spot?
Point, point three feet is.
You're, you're, you're.
Yeah, um.
Also, these things happen all the time?
The building.
Usually happens twice a year in a good year. You'd be surprised.
The building is CO'd and, and is functioning, so I would imagine the asphalt conditions came in the engineering department and they found it to be typical construction difference of a few inches and let it go and gave it a CO. But since they're back, the plan would be scrutinized at this type of review, probably it's picked up.
So, yeah.
That's normal, courses like that shouldn't happen, but it's not a, it's a building, it's not a wash.
Oh, fine, I might as well take a nap, I'm just trying to figure out how.
If it's closer to a half foot, usually the engineering department raises the red flag and tells them to come back to the plan and where to get it approved.
You gotta, you gotta say that.
There's another, probably just walk.
Get rid of the whole parking lot.
NJDEP and the paving of Sampson Avenue for access of the lot. Obviously, you can't, we can't use this lot unless it has access on a paved road. Sampson Avenue would have to be paved prior to us being able to build on that lot. So two things would have to happen before we could use that lot. The first is that we'd have to get approval from the NJDEP to build on it. The second is that Sampson Avenue would have to be improved by the applicant in order for the applicant to have a paved road to access that lot. At this point, though, I'm going to ask to have our engineer, Charles Simons, warn.
Raise your hands if you swear our firm with the testimony you give before this board will be the truth. The whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
What are you, what are you doing on lot forty point oh three?
Forty point oh three at this point is a vacant lot. It's going to be the subject of a future application, but right now it's just a vacant lot. We have no plan to do that.
Use that lot to access forty point oh seven?
Mr. Simons?
If you can't get through Sampson Avenue.
I mean, that lot's probably going to get used and be the subject of a future site plan application, to be honest. At this point, it's a vacant lot and the applicant's trying to figure out what, what its best use is.
It's a big, it's a big lot.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It will be the subject of a future site plan application. Nothing's going to happen on that lot until they come back in front of this board. At this point, like I said, the applicant is, is trying to determine what the best potential use for that lot is. So I don't think that's used for access, but they would have to pave Sampson Avenue to access the back lot.
If you could.
Right. If they can't pave Sampson, then they can't build on, on forty point oh seven.
So if you can't, you can't build on forty oh seven, then you're just going to subdivide forty point oh three?
Then forty point oh seven is going to remain a lot. We just won't be able to build on it. To separate, it'll be a separate taxable lot, but the applicant will not be able to build on it.
And forty point oh three will be a, a future subdivision?
Forty point oh three, I don't think it's a subdivision. I think it's a site plan, but...
You don't have any turnaround or anything on Sampson Avenue?
Mr. Simons?
If you build Sampson Avenue, you, you down the end, you got turnaround.
You're right. They'll have to deal with it at that point in time. I mean, at this point, at this point, the applicant's really just asking to create that lot so he doesn't have a situation where it's part of the duplex lot and he can never, he can never subdivide it at a later date.
My only question is that...
Premature, really, to be used.
I know, we're approving a lot and then you're going to say, listen, you, you gave us a lot to, we have to build on it.
We're making it, you'll make it clear in the resolution. We're giving you this lot, but it's subject to two things. DEP approval and it's got to have access from a paved road.
Okay. So proposal on forty point oh seven, does that have any, on any, on any road right now or it's just going to be Sampson?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
No, it has, forty point oh seven, that has frontage on Sampson Avenue.
It has frontage on Sampson.
Sampson's unapproved.
Intentionally.
If we approve, right. If we improve Sampson on that front. Where does Sampson go on, where does Sampson go to? That comes out where?
Here, that's it, that's the end, that's it.
Mr. Franklin, you, I'm sorry, you may recognize, if you look up on the aerial, uh, Ruben's property faces down here on eighty eight, but backs up to this corner of Sampson back here that kind of elves. They did have a subdivision application here where they were trying, trying to put a little driveway in and then move Sampson all the way and deny because they were referencing those wetlands issues. So you should be familiar with the area.
Because all that doy-avno all brings down into that, into that basin, it still does. So you're just, you're playing games.
No, we're hoping, we're hoping that that situation's going to be, that that hope's going to be rectified. If not, we won't be able to build on this lot, we know that.
But right now, what happens to all the doy-avno water? I don't see anybody buying where you've taken doy-avno water and taken it out of this area and taken it on down Ocean Avenue, cut across and got back to the other thing. You, you did it for a piece further up, but you haven't done anything in here. All you're doing is squeezing the drainage, squeezing the drainage. Because maybe it'll dry up and we keep selling. That's what it looks like.
I think it's in the process of being addressed for a couple of the other applications along Route eighty eight that we made it, that we specifically made it a condition of those approvals. Those projects are not yet, I think the one on Bird...
But you didn't take any consideration what you're doing up here. Because that water, if you had the doy, it all ended up in here. And you couldn't pipe that all out because that was, that was further down. I, I don't remember the whole thing now.
But the, the, right, but the, the idea certainly to clean that all up and once that, that whole mess gets cleaned up, hopefully these wetlands will actually shrink and the slot will become building.
Plan of trying pipes together with another set of pipes to drain. There's got to be some drainage done here.
I think it's being done by, it's being done by the applicants on other projects. And what we believe is that the result of what's being done on those projects is going to shrink the wetlands on this lot. If that doesn't happen, we won't be able to build in the slot because we'll never get approval from the DEP.
But we don't see any of that here. We should see some of that.
Right, we, we didn't show it because this applicant is not doing it.
Let me, on lot forty point oh seven?
Yes.
If you ever want to build on it, you have to first go to DEP and then you have to come back to us to get approvals to build on? We're not granting anything to build on it.
If you're, if you're approving the lot, then they have a, was essentially a buildable lot provided they get whatever required state approvals and provided they give paid right of access.
We'd have to satisfy the town.
And have no variances.
They would not necessarily have to come back here. They can build on it by right as long as they meet DEP requirements and are able to improve the right of way to the satisfaction of the town.
Right, I was going to say, we'd have to work with, with Mr. Seiger and the engineering department.
That is their hope because otherwise they'd have this large extra piece of property that would have the remaining part of the others built lots. So they wouldn't be able to sell those units because then they'd lose that piece.
Why don't they make all that done before we vote naked lots?
I guess they don't want to wait.
Well, that may take some time.
Yes, we got time.
So what we, what we like to do is be able to sell the duplexes, not keep this extra piece attached to a duplex lot.
Why can't you something like that? Do it with the owner.
Because once we sell, right now it's going to have to be appended to one of those duplex lots. Once we sell it, the owner of that lot has a mortgage on the whole piece. We can't just get his mortgage off this piece to sell it and he'd have to convey it back to us and whatnot.
Well, that's if you make it part of lot forty point oh three.
So what, make it more than lots, the rest of the lots?
I mean, realistically, forty point oh three is probably going to be dealt with in the not-too-distant future. We could do that and then we'll have to, then we'll come back with the same request when we come in for the site plan approval on forty point oh three.
Like Mr. Franklin said, come in with showing something, what you're doing with the drainage.
Or somebody else did.
Or somebody else did.
If you're going to attach to the other drains that already started, something's got to be done. Pick up all that doy-avno.
Are you the attorney on the, on the applications?
On the, which application?
I don't know, the surrounding?
Some of them, yes.
So maybe we could put it together and come in. Maybe we attach it to forty point oh three.
Let's attach it to forty point oh one. Let's attach it then to forty point oh one.
Forty point oh one?
Yes.
It's going to be archaic lot.
No.
Then you mean forty point oh three is the part of the slot?
Right, well, forty point oh three is going to be the subject of a future site plan approval in the not-too-distant future. So it's not going to help us.
It's much better for you.
Well, because forty point oh one, the applicant will keep that duplex unit. They'll hold on to that duplex unit until this is resolved. That, that's why it's going to work.
I think I would get a little more comfortable. Explain to me, if someone wants to come and, and build on forty point oh seven, let's say they get DEP approval. They, they come into the, they come in, they, they have a fully conforming application. They need to approve what? Improve what?
They need to ensure road access, including a turnaround per applicable township and RSI standards.
They would submit a plot plan and a road improvement plan through the building department and the engineering department.
Now, so Sampson Avenue may be, Sampson Avenue may be somewhat improved, but not necessarily a sidewalk, drainage?
No, it would be required to be in accordance with township standards unless some board grants them a waiver. So they would have to...
Township standards would be what?
Curved sidewalk everywhere.
And third...
And RSI compliant turnaround, however shaped that may be and whatever the requirement right of way width depending upon RSI standards.
So if we require, I guess, we like to see thirty-two feet. Um, are they going to have to provide thirty-two feet? What's the RSI standards?
I would recommend you put those requirements in now. Otherwise, they're going to come to the building department later and say, well, this is a rural blah 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 road and RSI only requires eighteen feet for that.
Well, I, I don't know necessarily if I need thirty-two feet. It doesn't go anywhere.
And I don't see the building problem.
But you're not going to have the wetlands buffer there. You can't build in a wetlands buffer.
Well, it would have to be approved by the DEP.
Yes, but you haven't shown anything, how are you going to dry it up?
Right, because at this point in time, it's not dried up and therefore we, we're not showing you now. We're just asking for the board to create the lot with the understanding that in the future it would have to be dried up so that the DEP would grant an approval.
Because as long as doy-avno keeps dumping in here, you're not going to dry this up. That's what matters.
No, I, I understand.
And whether you can tie into the other pipe system or that might be the other pipe system too small, that, that is...
No, I, I, Mr. Franklin, we understand all of that. This applicant is just asking that you, he knows that the odds of him ever being able to use this lot are actually slim for all the reasons that you're pointing out. But what, if he doesn't create it now, he's going to lose the ability to do that. So he's asking to create the lot now with the complete understanding of everything that you're saying. That we have to be able to pave Sampson Avenue with, without a wetlands buffer. Obviously, you can't pave in the wetlands buffer, so that's one issue. Not to mention with, the lot itself is currently mostly wetlands or wetland buffer.
So we're being told if we make it a lot, they don't have to come back?
No, well, they don't have to come back to this board, but they would have to get approval from the DEP.
So, Mr. Franklin, what I just confirmed with our engineer and planner was that, that if, if they would want to build on lot forty point oh seven ever, on this lot that they're creating, they would have to improve Sampson Avenue to RSI standards and township standards, which would include sidewalk and curb. And, and we're not sure how wide, but the street doesn't really go anywhere anyways.
That's true, but that has nothing to do with the doy-avno drainage.
But wouldn't the DEP look at the drainage situation before...
This is why you see this wetlands line through here. And this is the way it always went. It goes underground that water. It cuts off the doy-avno. It all dumped out into that corner for years. It dumped, it dumped in from a few other areas too. And everything went to that corner. And then the people out on Ocean Avenue was having problems because another person come in, cut the line off when they bought the lot. And then it made their houses. So we got all that, it took a few years, but we got all that straightened out with the DEP. And then when the other builders come in, it was going on down Ocean Avenue going on out. It, it's, it was a lot of work and it's not completed. You've got to get that completed before you can do this.
Right, no, but, but, Mr. Franklin, I think you're, you're missing my point. We, we know that. We're just asking to create the lot. We know we cannot build on this lot till all of that happens.
She said if we create the lot, they don't have to come back?
No, but they have to go to the DEP. The DEP's not going to approve this lot the way it currently stands. It's full of wetlands.
I don't know that.
Well, it's wet.
I don't know that if they don't get all that information.
Mr. Franklin, what if, what if we, if the board created the lot, but they did put a stipulation that the applicant would have to come back to this board before building on it? That would still help us because that would create the lot so it's not part of forty point oh one?
Could we make that stipulate?
Yeah. We have no problem with that, that's fair.
Yeah, I can agree to it.
Yeah, the applicant has an option.
Would be some sort of courtesy review of the road improvement plan or something like that? I just would like clarification on the board's review and...
Well, the road, the road is simple. It's that drainage, doy-avno that you got to worry about.
So you agreed up here for the planning board for the review and comments in, in general before constructing?
Yes, we have no problem with that. Like I said, that, that solves, that solves our objective. Our objective is just that that lot should be created now so we don't lose the ability to create it at a later date. I understand Mr. Franklin's concerns and I think they're valid.
Okay. What about the rest of...
I just talked about, about forty point oh six. So what are we doing with lot forty point oh six?
Forty point oh six?
The big one behind the other duplex.
No plans on that one at this time either.
We're going to have frontage to, doy avenue?
Yes.
So you have a variance, it's R seven five?
There's no variance.
It's fifty to R seven five?
Yes.
So you have fifty four?
Yes.
Anything else you want to add to your great rest of the form?
Number twenty-six, Ontario's report. The two duplex lots are not going to trigger a requirement for store water management. Um, but they're, the se, we're going, like I said, we are going to, there is going to be a separate site plan approval for lot forty point oh three. At that point, that will be triggered and at that point it will be dealt with. But right now with that lot not having any building on it.
Yeah, the one thing you have to, to look at with this, I, we, we sort of talked earlier. We have no problem with those in re-agreement compliance. If your engineers make the case that it should not be store waterable. Uh, the road itself may or may not trigger, you have to be aware. But we'll be happy to look at that in the board accident.
Mr. Simons, do you have any other comments? Can you, can you add anything else in the order?
Kind of just, just on the way. The way I see it, eventually you're going to come on forty point oh three, make a road, then you're going to split forty oh six and forty oh seven as three lots.
There's actually no plan to split forty point oh three, but...
No, oh, okay.
It's not the plan, but the plan will be here, Sean.
Any other questions, any board members? Sign all openers to the public. Anybody in the public would like to be heard? Sign no or close to the public. Make last motion on this application?
I would make a motion to approve with, with stipulation that forty point oh seven does come back to the planning board um, for, or the township engineer planning board for approval, reviewing the drainage. Side for that, there is no variance, so I would approve.
Okay. Mr. Coleman seconds, roll call.
Mr. Grunberger?
No.
Mr. Franklin?
No.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. Good night.
Uh, S P twenty-one thirty-eight.
Mr. Coleman said he's leaving now.
I don't leave in for thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds?
This is an extension.
This is an extension of a previously approved preliminary and final basis subdivision and site plan for the recent additions of Blue Market Site.
Mr. Chairman, I have the advocate. As Elliot indicated, we're here for our statutory extension. Um, we see the approval and we're now just going through residential compliance and we're seeking our...
How long you need the extension?
Up to two, up to two one-year extensions. Take both, you only going to be one year?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm not going to vote this. Okay, we, we don't have a call on that.
I don't, I don't need a call for...
It's an extension, it's not a permanent vote.
Right, so just, I guess the majority of members eligible to vote, okay.
Okay.
I move.
You will?
To extend.
We have a second to extend?
Second.
The second, roll call?
Mr. Grunberger?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
And Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, who's number seven?
Yes. Uh, list, application on tonight, Mr. Chez, S P twenty-two sixty-eight, we can't read LLCs, maybe second or third.
You're doing five minutes, Mr. Chez?
Four.
It's early, thanks, why, you guys are getting greedy.
No, I'm leaving.
Oh, okay.
Now.
I'm happy here.
You want to go to the public?
How fast, though?
Adam, you have to wait. We wait for you, you have to wait. Phil Stevens, great, okay, one second, I'll get to Terry first.
No, I'm just looking, we, um, we had issued a advisory review.
David Herzl is Terry.
Chairman, you should have a drive view and update a letter that we issued today in response to some zoning clarifications by the applicant's engineering planner dated December seventh. Um, quickly, if you look at our letter, we have submission waivers, including TOCO contours and man-made features within two hundred feet. We support those waivers.
Okay, you have a motion to go along with the waivers, Mopin? We have a second?
All right, and then variances for signage as we understand it, including a freestanding sign, uh, freestanding sign area as well as height. Um, just continuing on, uh, as indicated, um, under our comment three, there is a variance for the wall mounted signage. Comment four, variance relief is being sought, um, for parking. I'm sure we'll have testimony very shortly. Bill, I believe that's all the relief, is that correct?
That will be correct, Chair. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Franklin, I was talking about the thought of the relief.
Oh, I'm sorry, correct?
Yes, the design relief.
Oh, yes, you have, you have design waivers. Uh, the design waiver section for buffers in the eight hundred, which is why it's a waiver versus variance relief. Um, concrete sidewalks, a long route, it'd be frontage. Um, and then, are, are, are you seeking relief on utility control?
We can provide utilities that would be due.
Okay, but the issue is perhaps paying increase depending upon...
Correct, yes.
Phil, here he is. Do you swear our firm with the testimony you give before this board will be the chief? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
William Stevens, S P D V E S?
Okay, please proceed.
Back to you, Chair.
And then possibly the, the last item as if necessary, Lee.
Correct. So, Mr. Franklin, you hit on two of the big things. I mean, for, for starters, I've been telling everybody about this application. We're building a stand yard, Subaru facility in the corner of Hampshire Avenue. This facility, when we establish, will be their flagship facility. People from all over this country are going to come from Lakewood Township to see this new dealership. And that is the truth, that is what's being done here. So I know I've told this board about this and everybody else has been listening to this for months because we're real trying to fast track this project.
According to record, Bill's told us as well.
We, we have...
He, he's proud of what he does.
Well, just, did somebody else just come at the flagship's door, dealership over there as well?
I'm not certain.
We don't... Of course.
The flagship project.
What's the flagship, the dealership?
The same shit.
So with yours and them? There have too many people here.
But I'd like to think this is a private project. We really like to see here in town, commercial development, commercial rateables and not only that. You know, stand yard, classics, I mean, this is something. I personally very proud of it and I think the town's going to be really proud once we get this done.
Any variances in the application?
Yes. All the ones you've associated with the private dealership on Route eighty-eight. Side in, side out. If you want to go through...
Primarily side.
Side.
Right, so, so we're asking for some, what I would call minor variances for the freestanding sign out front. Directly across the street, we have a pine belt sign that's up on Route eighty. That's the big sign in town, I don't want to do it. But this sign is nothing like that sign. This sign's a typical brand sign. It's going to look like the Chrysler signs down the street. That, that type of sign we have, not this monstrosity thing that's across the street. So it's going to fit in with character.
And the other variances?
So we have... This is a, this is a very small variant, so I'm bored of the board taking up time, but your order is only allowed sixty square feet of wall signs. So on the front of the building where it says Subaru, Pine Belt Subaru like that, if you add that up, it actually adds up to about a hundred and eighty-five square feet. So we need to vary technically to move that. We also need a parking variance. And the reason why we need the parking variance, we're asking for providing seventy-seven spaces where a total of eighty-seven spaces are being required, calculated by your engineer. And the reason why we're asking this...
One second.
This is important. It's just not a categorized parking space. We have a hundred and forty-six stalls on the site.
Right.
But the majority of those stalls are going to be utilized for product stores to display used products. That's, you know, so I just want the board to be aware. We, we, Pine Belt, all of the badges runs garbage. We know we have enough parking here to make this work, but technically the way we have shorter drawings, we do need a variance.
So how many parking spaces are you giving? Is that eighty-one? Not eighty-one's required?
We're providing seventy-seven spaces.
And you need eighty-one?
Uh, according to your, your eighty-eight, my original calculation was eighty-one, his is eighty-eight, so eighty-four.
Just one, one important point, Chairman. You have a number of display spaces on the property which are not being counted. For argument's sake, if they built this and they found out, you know something, you don't have enough parking.
You just put less parking on it. Especially business leadership store, you're not going to want to mess with the parking.
It's going to work. You definitely want people to be able to park.
You, you have sidewalks over there, are you ready?
Okay, so there are sidewalks currently, new curbs and sidewalks installed along Hampshire Avenue. We did not show sidewalks we built along Route eighty-eight. If the board will recall, we originally were going to build Chrysler on this site. We had a site plan approved by this board for that Chrysler facility. That site plan did include a waiver for sidewalks on Route eighty-eight.
Stop doing that.
And the reason, the reason why is, and we're, we're continuing to make a request, it's up to the board obviously, but there's a lot of equipment in Route eighty-eight along this front. And there are no other sidewalks to be used on. So we could put it in. I'm not exactly sure how we're going to fit it in. There's, there's a lot of utility poles there, there's a traffic light there, there's traffic signal boxes. It's not going to be easy to do.
If you move it back, do you lose any parking spaces? By putting in the sidewalks?
Well, no, it's going to have to fit into the space that we have left between the, the edge of the parking and Route eighty-eight of companies, the flagships. We're going to have to put in that sidewalk. It, it got to be done, it, it got to be perfect and straight.
Mr. Franklin, what's your opinion about the sidewalks?
Well, I like seeing sidewalks.
I know, even though Route eighty-eight, I think eventually they are going to have.
Actually, they're going to have eventually.
Eventually.
Would you continue sidewalk everywhere?
Okay, I'll, I'll move it outside us. Give us the right not to maintain strict sidewalk in a linear direction, but to make adjustments along the way. If there's a tree there, we, we always allow that. They go around, go around the tree or... Yes.
I probably go around that tree. It's, it's utilities.
It's utilities, we need to go on the other side. So we're, that's acceptable to the applicant, so long as we understand the resolution provides that the sidewalk can...
I don't know, I'd like to see how meandering the site is going to be.
What's that word?
I'm making wish me do from doing here. They're not going to be able to tell until the I D apply all of the potential conflicts. I would imagine, Bill, it's not going to be meander more than five, ten feet in the property of that.
I would hope a lot less than that. I would like to see very close to the curb, but it's going to take some work to make that happen.
Okay. Anything else in the report?
So, so one of the other waivers you're talking about is a waiver for a buffer requirement. So technically, technically the door, your forces...
I'm trying to just, even the board's just asking me, I have to be polite. This, this is the front of the property. Here's the intersection over here.
Correct.
The intersection. Um, there are some traffic signs and there are...
Is that, is that...
Utility poles right here.
So why can't you keep the sidewalk on? So don't you have normally like the sidewalk?
Right on the side of that, right over here?
Yeah, on the inside, you have to be the inside of the poles, it looks like.
You'll have to go to the inside of the pole. Yeah. And also the transformer, yes.
And there are some, there are some signs that are up now too. There's significant signs, there are DOT signs. We'll have to see what we can do about that. I can take it down later.
And then I have, there was a question about what's in the area.
It's probably the last meeting.
It does look, it does look like the lot community between East does not have sidewalks, but one lot further, there are sidewalks along the frontage, so it is coming into the area.[1768.01]
Well, we're not going to be...
Just sidewalks, that and that, and anyway, make sure these straight sidewalks, and just move it inside your building.
That may not be the only cause.
I would, I would recommend giving them some latitude.
It, it may not be perfectly aligned.
I'm not going to meander an extra, just for fun, if possible.
If you make them subject...
I'll do as soon as I can.
If you make them subject to dealing with the utility companies, you're going to add substantial loads.
You better.
So, I appreciate it.
I already heard that, if I have any...
Applicant did break down, but all right. Do you review the rest of the report?
There's one more thing I just wanted to talk about with the board, the, the door to property line of our project technically abuts the residential multifamily valve in Woodley. So, there is a buffer requirement along here, according to your engineer 50 feet, but what's, we're asking for a waiver, we want to simply put up a fence between the two uses, but it's important for the board to realize that there is no residential use adjacent to our property, it's where the road comes in, and there is a wooden buffer that's going to be on their side of this property line, so, I mean, you're not even going to, you're not going to see our facility from this side, all, all you're going to see would be the fence.
But isn't the point of the buffer to, to buffer between a commercial use and residential use to protect the residential use?
Yeah, it's a way of all.
It, it is, it is, but there's always an alternative, for a structure, fence, so it's the same curves.
Terry, doesn't, when we go down from a 50 for buffer to a 20 for buffer, don't we have to put trees and...
U D O allows the fence and door vegetation.
And vegetation, right.
I don't think it mandates it, I think if, if, if you read it, it could be either or both.
I would like...
But that's a discretion of the...
There's a road, and there's vegetation on the other side as well, so really, it's a buffer, it's not like there are houses, but which right up to that.
Some of the people driving cars...
So, that was the point I was trying to make, our property doesn't border the residential, the residential's on the other side of the street, and this is a divided roadway that comes through here, so we're not really ordered in the way that we are, so we're ordered in the residential zone, not the residential use.
There's, there's a roadway going in between your property and the residential.
Can you show them?
Okay, then I have a question.
So, the road, the road is out here, so all the vegetation is on the north side of the cell, lots of stuff.
So, how many feet is it from this commercial use to the nearest residential property? Like, is it more than 50 feet?
Yes, it's more than 50 feet.
Why don't you give the board an estimate, does not need, using that scale on your map?
I would guess it's about 25, something like that. There is, there is some structure that goes through the multifamily toward like back in here, but there is a structure in here, which I guess is residential, which would pick out 50 feet from our property.
You've got a 50 foot buffer on their side, plus the fence, and intervening roadway.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, any board members? Seeing none, we'll open it to the public. And, yeah, Mr. Grunberger, sorry.
This buffer, the reason why you're requesting this buffer, is it going to be usable that for the property?
That's correct.
Or is it going to be put in there parking?
Yes, part of the side of the facility, and we're providing 146 parking stalls, and this, this is the area that we're talking about, the question we'd like to fit, and lean over to the, to the car dealership, so...
Thank you. I will close it to the public. I would ask for a motion on this application.
I'll make that motion on my end.
Just very quickly, so, could we, could we figure out that it's less than, that it's more than 50 feet between the residential structure and the residential use?
It is, yes.
At least 50.
At least 50.
That's our representation to you.
And, you know, when you talk about this, this sidewalk that, that meander a little bit, it's like you have, it's something, you'd be going straight, if you near a pole, you would move in, you would, you would deviate from the course, go around the obstacle, and it's supposed to make the same amount, come back on course where you can.
Exactly, in fact, you make it subject to your own engineer's approval, of the, the course of the site. Thank you to all the designers, as well as us. We'll submit it to them, it's up to them.
We've actually done public sidewalks in town, and we have basically, otherwise, you're trying to move poles, and you're talking lots of time and lots of money.
I've seen it all over the league, but you go around the poles, you're not that...
Every time, yeah, true.
Okay, thank you.
We'll do the rest again.
Okay. Mr. Fulmer, you want to go back to making your motion?
Yeah, I want to make that motion, to approve this application, that we can discuss, making the sidewalk as straight as possible.
Okay, do we have a second? Mr. Renner, do you want a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Run a second.
Chairman, it will be reviewed with the, your professional, that, that we're under tremendous side pressure from Subaru, so we ask that we proceed with the grading and restoration.
Well, what you want to do is, you'll want to reach out to the engineering department as soon as possible.
Is grading having to be in the resolution, if you took the prior...
Um, there was, board, if you want to pay attention for a second.
Mr. Stevens is requesting on behalf of his applicant that they be allowed to proceed with site clearing and grading, get started on the work while they're still finalizing the resolution applying to Terry. They did speak with Mr. Stager, the Towns of Engineering over email, who responded today to say that typically, that procedure is reserved only for nonprofit schools and synagogues, and that if they're looking to start that on a commercial site, they wouldn't be required to get the endorsement of either the Towns of Engineering or the Towns of Management. If, if the planning board is in favor of this application and does not have reservations about them moving forward with site clearing only and grading with a bond for the same while they finish reservation compliance, it would certainly be helpful for them to have some comment from the board to that effect.
You can have favorable siding to the management.
We never dealt with that, that was always engineering department.
Exactly, and that's why the engineer department, we don't really have an issue with it, but kind of like once you do it for one guy, you got to do it for everybody, so you have engineers being very cautious about that.
I think that you're way better off doing it for ratable than doing it for, for, for getting money fixed, if that makes sense. Hey, I just want to...
John, what do you think about that? Yeah?
You get money, you have to finish the rush, this, I make taxes, then, you know, go buy more houses.
What we're typically, what we're typically going to require, if everyone approves, is to go forward based upon the use, we're typically going to want to see a soil erosion permit to make sure there's no issues with that. They will typically post some form of bonding to guarantee the work in question, and then there'll be a whole farm list to the satisfaction of the houses.
Agreed, no respect.
Okay. Could we just discuss before we take a roll call, the ingress and egress of the, of the site, because it's on two major highways.
Yes, you are correct, so, so the site has shortage on two major highways, Route 88 located on the bottom of the page, as a state highway, New Hampshire Avenue located in north-south direction along the western border of the property. So, this site plan exactly follows the Chrysler site plan that was approved by this board, the county, and the DOT as far as access to it, we held the driveways for the 3D's approval, so that there would be no question about how we would do that. So, the driveways are very simple, there's a right-in, right-out only on Route 88, there is a right-in, right-out only in the center of the project on New Hampshire Avenue, and then a full movement driveway located far to the door, basically across the street from the AutoZone driveway, where we would be able to have full movement, it's right-in, right-out, and also left turn out here as well.
Sets it the greatest distance from the signal.
Correct. So, that's what was originally approved by all this board, the county and DOT, and it's what we're proposing to do.
I'm a little concerned about left out of New Hampshire.
It may be difficult.
Could we restrict it to right, right out, or is that...
You get a record of that, anybody that's still answer, is it that county jurisdiction?
It's certainly county jurisdiction, the county has given us approval for that already. It's actually, I looked at the same way, Mr. Renner, and I thought the same thing, so I talked to my traffic engineers, I should hear, really want to talk about this, and I said, why do we need this? And he said, well, the problem is, is that anybody who wants to go back...
It's like Utah.
West onto, onto State Highway, it's the only way for them to do it, they got to come out here, leave a left, get to the, get to the traffic light to go back to the parkway, so being that this is the type of facility that it is, you are going to travel to get there, to get back and forth to the parkway, that driveway, you're not supported if I turn.
I'm, I'm very concerned, I, I really want, and New Hampshire's a fully busy highway,
It's happening across the street.
You know, you know, the traffic light, so do hold that traffic light.
Correct.
But you come out of that store, there, you get a big opening for the light, you have on 88 and the light you have on, on Ridge Avenue, so you do have time to work that, it does work, I use that road a lot.
It does look like that entrance way may be about where, I know it's hard to see on this photo, but about where there is some centering hash area, there, you know, there's a little bit of a gap there, I feel like it's a little more of a way as well. I know the area, if you feel like it's, it's mostly set far enough back in the intersection.
If you'd like to hear more traffic expert, you could just, you could maybe sit lots of, actually, it won't take much. Start now, we've done and rate, do you raise your rating every second?
Do you swear if I have the testimony you give before this board, it'll be the chief, the whole chief, and nothing but the chief?
I do.
Thank you.
Sitting in the audience, you've heard the issue?
Yes.
Kind of, after we've finished the ship.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right. It's my opinion that to provide, it's best to provide a full movement driveway on the northern part of the site, again, to accommodate, there's more transit type traffic, or traffic oriented to the parkway. In addition, if you don't allow left turns out of that driveway, then you're forcing more traffic to the north on New Hampshire Avenue, off the Ridge Road, and onto more local roads. This type of use is predominantly oriented towards Route 88, as well as New Hampshire Avenue's south, so it's my opinion that it's best to leave that as a full movement instead of imposing the restriction.
Does he point out the county and the agency? Is it? Is, is, and that is actually, you would make a bus stop over there, is that over there a four-way highway or is it a five-way, is there a turn lane there also?
It's transitioned, it's, it's, I'm going to say, you have two southbound lanes, you have one northbound lane at that point, so it's a, it's three.
Oh, you only have one road that way?
At that location, because it transitions, it tapers down to one, it's four.
That's much better.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
We have nothing further, Mr. Chairman. Okay, thank you. Does your motion stand? Yeah, okay, roll call.
Mr. Grunberger.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, good night. Just wanted to say, it's the end of the year, it's our, our last meeting right now for the year. I want to thank... No, it's our last meeting. I want to thank all...
To cut, we did have one scheduled on the 27th, we have, with the addition of tonight's meeting, we have been able to avoid putting anything on the agenda for the 27th, so I will be posting a formal cancellation notice on our website, and Mr. Ben Buck will take care of any legal notices that need to be done for our cancellation. But other than that, our next meeting will be January 9th, Tuesday here, which will be a short presentation. Maybe, maybe appoint new members depending on teams that are expiring or teams that have become vacant.
Okay, anyway, I would...
I'd love to, my most to reach out to everyone prior to the meeting on 9th, but feel free to call me anytime after the committee meeting, kind of, or extend if you'd like the formal list of board members from the committee.
I would like to thank all the board members for the past year, everybody participating. It was a tough year, and we accomplished a lot. And I would like to thank our professionals, Ally, Terry, and Kimberly, that you're here, or, or Mr. Jackson. Or Mr. Jackson. And I would like to wish everybody happy holidays. And, and I would like to see...
Your bills.
Yeah, one second. I would like to see everybody who's currently on the board, that please continue next year.
Mr. Herzl, thank you, Chair, and I want to thank you. I appreciate you, Phil, and you, Paul.
Okay, thank you very much.